I call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education Thursday, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five at four twenty five PM with Cervantes, Cruz, Monroe, Nah, and Shaw present. Pat, are there any requests from the public to speak on closed session items prior to the board adjourning into closed session?
Yes.
Thank you, Pat. We will now adjourn into closed session regarding the following matters, which are all described in detail on the printed agenda. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, two possible cases. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, one case. Student discipline matters, conference with labor negotiators, ACT and CSJA negotiations. Public employee discipline dismissal release, and public employee performance evaluation superintendent. For the record, under closed session, item D, student discipline matters, cases twenty four twenty five dash twenty five and twenty four twenty five dash twenty nine are deleted from the agenda.
Thank you.
I now reconvene the regular meeting of Board of Education at 6:00 PM with Cervantes, Cruz, Monroe, Na and Shaw present. Before we begin, please silence all electronic devices and note that these proceedings are being recorded. Pat?
The Board met in close session from 4:25 PM to 5:50 PM regarding conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, two possible cases: conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, one case; student discipline matters, conference with labor negotiators, ACT and CSEA negotiations; public employee discipline dismissal release and public employee performance evaluation superintendent. No action was taken that required public disclosure.
Thank you, Pat. And tonight, one of our special guests are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Joy Chu.
Ready, begin. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Now we're on to Item 1C, Student Showcase. We have Ayala High School Chinese and Japanese Clubs. It truly is a treat when students join us to highlight their talents and hard work. Without further ado, we hope that you will be thrilled and inspired by our students' creativity and, of course, their energy. Before the students begin, Ms. Lin Gao, can you please approach the mic and share with us a little about the students in the program?
Good morning, everyone. So I'm Ms. Guo from Ayala High School. I'm the Mandarin Chinese teacher. I'm the Mandarin Chinese teacher, also Chinese club of Ayala High School, club advisor. So it's really my great honor to be here, so to stay with you tonight. So I'm really proud and excited to want to introduce our Chinese club. This year, we have line dance, Chinese folk dance, and traditional performance. So we have three groups. But in the past, in the past six years, not include the pandemic period, we have more than ten times multicultural event every single year to show our culture to the community. So our Chinese club was start at 2013, start from 2013. So I want to express my deep gratitude to our Ayala High School principal, Mrs. Ya Boy and Mr. Hill. So without their support, we cannot stay in here today. So Mr. Ya Boy gave us really solid, constant, and friendly support always to Chinese club, to Chinese program, and me. So I really want to show my gratitude, thanks to my principals. Thank you so much. And tonight, tonight, I hope you guys, you enjoy our Chinese performance showcase. So we'll have three performances: line dance, Chinese folk dance, and the traditional Chinese instruments. Hope you enjoying the show. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chinese Club. Thank you very much for an excellent performance. I want to talk a little bit about Lin Guo. It is with great pleasure and confidence that I recommend Ms. Lin Guo, Ayala's exceptional Mandarin Chinese teacher for the Educator of the Year Award. In the decade I have known Ms. Guo, I have consistently admired her continuous dedication of approaches every, she approaches every endeavor, both inside and outside the classroom with precision and perseverance, all traits that have positively impacted our school and community. With a near hundred percent pass rate for AP Chinese exams over the ten-year span, she has pioneered and significantly expanded Ayala's Chinese program from five to ten classes. Ms. Guo mentors student teachers from various local colleges and universities. She also serves as the mentor teacher for the induction program at Chino Valley Unified School District. As advisor of the Chinese and Japanese club at Ayala, she has led numerous student performances, including traditional line dances, folk dances, Chinese traditional instruments at several community events, performing more than ten times a year and attracting thousands of attendees. She also manages all logistical details for the Lou Spandau Award writing contest for the Chinese American Association in Chino Hills, which has encouraged community members of all ages to learn Chinese for the past seven years. Additionally, she helps manage ChineseInn.com, an informational website providing resources for the Chinese-speaking community in the Indian Empire in San Bernardino County area. Ms. Guo is committed to growth and excellence in further reflection in her participation in teaching seminars, both as a presenter and as an attendee. She has been invited multiple times to present at the Southern California Council of Chinese Schools conferences. Ms. Lin Guo is talented and dedicated and has substantially made a positive impact within many Chinese programs she's involved in. She's an exceptional individual who treasures and sees the success of her students in learning the Chinese language and the Chinese culture. For these reasons, I am honored to have nominated Ms. Guo for the Region Ten League of Educators Educator of the Year Award. The ceremony will be held on Friday, January 24th at 6:00 PM. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Guo on her continued success. Thank you.
Okay, ready?
I need a two. I need a two.
You need two?
Yeah. Thank you. 近一点，ok了，近一点
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Chinese Club. Thank you very much for an excellent performance. I want to talk a little bit about Lin Guo. It is with great pleasure and confidence that I recommend Ms. Lin Guo, Ayala's exceptional Mandarin Chinese teacher for the Educator of the Year Award. In the decade I have known Ms. Guo, I have consistently admired her continuous dedication of approaches every, she approaches every endeavor, both inside and outside the classroom with precision and perseverance, all traits that have positively impacted our school and community. With a near hundred percent pass rate for AP Chinese exams over the ten-year span, she has pioneered and significantly expanded Ayala's Chinese program from five to ten classes. Ms. Guo mentors student teachers from various local colleges and universities. She also serves as the mentor teacher for the induction program at Chino Valley Unified School District. As advisor of the Chinese and Japanese club at Ayala, she has led numerous student performances, including traditional line dances, folk dances, Chinese traditional instruments at several community events, performing more than ten times a year and attracting thousands of attendees. She also manages all logistical details for the Lou Spandau Award writing contest for the Chinese American Association in Chino Hills, which has encouraged community members of all ages to learn Chinese for the past seven years. Additionally, she helps manage ChineseInn.com, an informational website providing resources for the Chinese-speaking community in the Indian Empire in San Bernardino County area. Ms. Guo is committed to growth and excellence in further reflection in her participation in teaching seminars, both as a presenter and as an attendee. She has been invited multiple times to present at the Southern California Council of Chinese Schools conferences. Ms. Lin Guo is talented and dedicated and has substantially made a positive impact within many Chinese programs she's involved in. She's an exceptional individual who treasures and sees the success of her students in learning the Chinese language and the Chinese culture. For these reasons, I am honored to have nominated Ms. Guo for the Region Ten League of Educators Educator of the Year Award. The ceremony will be held on Friday, January 24th at 6:00 PM. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Guo on her continued success. Thank you.
Now, it's my, I'm so excited and so proud to introduce my Chinese club members. Now first, let me introduce our president, Shu Qi Kevin Lee. And also, let me introduce Guang Yu Zhou, our co-president. And also, our officer, the team leader, Si Tu Cindy, Cindy Si Tu. Now, it's our honor, Mr. Ya Boy, want to recognize every single of you guys over here. Si Tu Cindy, please, yeah, please step forward. Yeah, Cindy Si Tu. Liu Wei Xuan, Winnie Liu. Dai Jing Jing. Zhu Feihuang. Shang Qi Gao. Ma Le Di Zhang.
谢谢，congratulations.
Gu Xinyu.
Congratulations.
Zhou Guang Yu, our co-president. Ryan Wen.
Congratulations.
Zachary Wen.
Congratulations.
Mu Di Shen.
Congratulations.
Ren Song.
Congratulations.
Yang Feng Rui, Rui.
Congratulations.
Yan Jian Ping, Jian Ping Yan, Ping.
Congratulations.
Luke Hao Tian Jiang.
Congratulations.
Li Shu Chen, our president. Congratulations, good job. Good job, everyone.
We're gonna squish. One, two, three. Oh, one more, sorry.
Before we move on, we just again want to thank you. That was very beautiful. Thank you for doing the presentation. We are very, very fortunate to see that. So thank you again. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication and thank you to our students. It was beautiful, absolutely beautiful. We have another treat. Before we move on to our staff report, we also want to recognize that our guest from Ayala High School Cross Country Team had asked to be present at the board meeting tonight. I can meet you guys at the...
Cross Country Team, we'd like to present to you a frame which has our signatures on it to show our gratitude for the Alabama trip and to give us an opportunity to compete once more in the season. Thank you. Ready, one, two, three. Hold on, the mic.
Thank you again for coming out tonight. This is very special for us and we'll definitely make sure it ends up on one of our walls over here. Thank you. Okay, all the beautiful things. Now we're on to one D. Next is Mr. Hackney presenting the LCAP mid-year update.
Good evening, President Shaw, members of the board, Superintendent Enfield, Cabinet and Community. Our report to the board this evening is on the Local Control and Accountability Plan, also known as the LCAP. This report offers a mid-year snapshot of the available data alongside our expenditures and the implementation level of actions outlined in our current LCAP. Our existing LCAP consists of four goals. Tonight, we will only report mid-year progress on Goals One and Two and their associated metrics, actions, and services. LCAP Goal One states all students are provided a high-quality teaching and learning environment. The metrics for Goal One are considered local metrics and are reported tonight as met, in progress, or met within a specified timeframe. There are six annual measurable outcomes to evaluate our progress of Goal One. As you can see, we have currently met the desired outcome on five and technology refresh will be completed by April 2025. To measure our progress on teachers with a clear credential, we use the State's Teacher Assignment and Monitoring Outcomes Report. We are above both the state and county average for teachers with clear teaching credentials and we have met our desired outcome. For facilities in 2425, we are happy to report that 100% of facilities received a good or higher rating as measured by the facilities inspection tool and we have met our desired outcome. Standards-aligned materials in 2425, 100% of schools reviewed have sufficient textbooks and instructional materials according to Williams site reviews and we have met our desired outcome. Implementation of state-adopted standards is occurring in all of our classrooms and we have met our desired outcome. Our goal is that all teachers and students... Our goal is that all teachers and students have access to updated technology that is four years old or newer. This year, with the LCAP funds that have been allocated for technology, we were able to upgrade, deploy and replace devices for teachers and students in kindergarten, 5th and 9th grades. All teachers have at least one computer or laptop provided that is four years old or newer. And again, we will meet this outcome in April when the refresh is complete. Enrollment in a program course of study, students in grades TK through 12 have access to and are enrolled in appropriate courses and we have met our desired outcome. There are 14 actions identified for LCAP Goal 1. On this slide, you will see the first nine actions. Column 1 indicates the actions. The second column indicates the budgeted expenditures, then the estimated actuals through mid-year. And the last column reflects our implementation level for each action. The last column will show fully implemented or partially implemented. Partially implemented indicates we are in process and those actions will be completed by the end of the school year. For Action 1, our Human Resources Staff will be attending recruitment fairs throughout the spring to recruit and attract new staff members to our district. For Action 4, purchases are planned that will allow the continued use of some of our current textbooks. For Action 5, purchases are planned once the pilot phase of the instructional materials has concluded. Continuing on with actions in Goal 1, for Action 12, in the 2425 school year, there have been over 5,500 student devices refreshed. Again, that's in kindergarten, 5th and 9th grades, and 300 teacher devices being refreshed this year. Action 13, Instructional Technology Program. This is done through our Tech Exploration Committee, who provides recommendations on technology resources that will support our classroom teachers. Action 14 addresses our Deferred Maintenance Program for routine maintenance items to keep our facilities in good standing. LCAP Goal 2 states students, parents, families and staff are connected and engaged to their school to ensure student success. The metrics for Goal 2 are also "local" metrics and are reported tonight as "met", "in progress" or "to be determined with the specified timeframe of when it will occur". Graduation rate for the class of 2024 increased and we are in progress to continue to get more students to meet graduation requirements. Year-end attendance for 2024 increased by 1% and we have met our desired outcome. Chronic absenteeism has decreased by 5.3% and we have met our desired outcome. Suspension rates have decreased and we are in progress with this metric. Expulsion rates have remained constant according to the state report. However, 0.1% is the lowest number the state will report other than 0% and we have met our desired outcome. Dropout rate for high school has decreased by 2.33% and it is important to note this percentage also includes any students that may have moved out of the state or country and we have met our desired outcome. Our K-12 School Quality Survey will open on Monday and we encourage everyone to participate. The State Reflection Tool for Parent Engagement will be completed and determined in May. Following are the actions identified for LCAP Goal 2. On this slide, you will see the first 10. For Action Number 1, the Family Engagement Center continues to provide trainings to parents and staff. For Action 11, Supplemental Education covers district interventions which include credit recovery for our high school students. Action 17 is our Hope Resource Center, which serves families in our community with basic necessities. Action 19 is our Community Day School at Chino Valley Learning Academy, where we are able to maintain small class sizes and staffing to allow personal connections to support students with significant needs. Action 20, for Action 20, there is a Foster Youth Counselor for all foster students in our district. Action 23, Other Means of Correction Training, although there is a $0 amount, this action still occurs with existing staff we have in our organization. Action 24 is for staff at our Brief Academy that supports students with significant behavioral needs. This completes our mid-year update on LCAP Goals 1 and 2 to the Board of Education.
Thank you so much, Board members. If you would like to make comments or you have questions, please use your light system and I can queue you in. I guess I'm the only one. I just want to go back to Slide 7 where it was saying, and I want to make sure I hear you correctly. So we are held accountable and we have to report as a dropout if someone were to move out of country or state?
Yes, that's the state requirement. We have to report that.
Make sure because it just sounds bizarre to me, but thank you for clarifying that. And other than that, I really thank you for bringing this to the attention, not only to us but for the public as well. Thank you. Thank you again, sorry. We are now at comments from our student representative, Gabriella.
Good evening, Board President Shaw, members of the board, Superintendent Enfield and distinguished guests. First of all, I would like to start off by saying Happy New Year to everyone. I already know this year is going to be an amazing one. Our CVUSD elementary, junior high and high school students started the year off right, returning to school on Monday, January 6th, bright and early to start the second half of the year right. For our high school students and winter athletes, this also meant the beginning of league. Our winter sports at Don Lugo and Chino began their run in the Mount Baldy League, Ayala in the Palomorus League and Chino Hills in the Baseline League. Good luck to all the sports as they continue on. Represent CVUSD, be proud to represent and hopefully we can come out with some wins. Additionally, Don Lugo, last Friday, held their first rally of the year. It was Disneyland-themed celebrating winter sports. As for some of our younger students, Lila Lesbriggs is currently having a spirit week, Country Spring celebrated 30 years of excellence and all of our student leaders are busy planning new school events. Apart from our success, I would also like to shed some light on the tragedy that has been the Palisades and Eaton Fires. The fires have together engulfed over 37,000 acres of land, leaving many families without homes. Ayala Girls and Boys Water Polo, along with Ayala National Honor Society, are hosting donation drives where you are able to donate any new toiletries, bedding, clothing and any other gently-used items. Ayala's Water Polo Drive is taking place today at the Ayala Pool Deck until 8:00 PM and the NHS Drive is accepting donations by tomorrow, Friday, January 17th. For more information, you can find the flyers on the Ayala Girls Water Polo and Ayala NHS Instagram pages. Any donation makes a difference and is appreciated by so many. Thank you for your time and support. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you so much, Gabriella, and thank you for that update and providing the information on how they can help. We truly appreciate it. We are now on to Item 1F, comments from our employee representatives. Mr. Stephen Frazier from ACT.
Evening. I want to begin today, like Gabriella, by addressing the devastating wildfires and that have affected LA and its surrounding areas. Our hearts go out to all those that are impacted by this terrible disaster and we know that many families in our broader educational community have also been affected. So it's moments like this that we truly see the strength and resilience in our community. So I wanted to make sure to acknowledge that. Also, I want to take time to acknowledge and express our deepest gratitude to both our classified and our certificated staff. During this crisis, they've shown, you've shown exceptional dedication, courage, compassion in meeting the needs of their students or families and our community. And to our certificated employees, you've not only continued to provide stability and normalcy for our students in this time, but you've also gone above and beyond to offer emotional support in the classroom despite facing your own challenges during this time. This collective effort reminds us that education is more than just academics. It's about community. It's about standing together when it matters the most and ensuring that every student and every family feels supported even in our most uncertain times. So with that, again, I want to say thank you to our employees for your unwavering commitment to our students, our schools and our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We also have Danny Hernandez from CSEA.
Thank you, President Shaw, excuse me, Board Member, Superintendent Enfield, Staff and Community. Just like Gabriella and Mr. Frazier mentioned about the local fires, they affect us all in me more than likely, if not directly, indirectly. Recently, in our area, the high winds and the power outages. I wanted to acknowledge the school site staff, classified, certificated management, the district personnel. It truly took a team to make sure that the students and staff were protected, which is our ultimate goal during these types of situations. I appreciate Ms. Gabriella sharing that, the local process for helping the local fire affected individuals through the local fire. So thank you for that. I also wanted to thank or welcome our new board member, Mr. Cervantes, and congratulate our two incumbents, Mr. Cruz and Mr. Na on your reelections. CSEA looks forward to continued collaborating with the board and with Cabinet on any upcoming situations. Lastly, I wanted to congratulate management and the teachers' union. They did ratify and, or excuse me, reached a tentative agreement that you guys will be hopefully approving tonight. CSEA is currently in negotiations with the district, but I did want to acknowledge and congratulate both groups. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And I have Emily Lau from CHION.
Good evening, President Shaw, School Board Member, Superintendent Enfield, Cabinet and Chino Valley Community. I'm so glad that I was here today in person at this event. I know everybody said that, but it's always amazing to see our wonderful, talented students. It's why we all do what we do every day. So thank you to the Ayala students for sharing their talents and where they're tracked in all of our performances today. That's just warmed my heart. Happy January to everyone. This month, administrators across the district, including myself, will be busy in what I always call the beginning of our crunch time. Our secondary students are beginning their second, their final semester and our elementary students are quickly approaching the 100th day of school. It's a good time to remind our students and ourselves to persevere and keep working hard. It's also the time when administrators start planning for the upcoming school year. One of the best pieces of information that we have for making decisions is input from our parents, staff and students. Very soon, January 20th to be exact, our students, staff and parents will have the opportunity to make their voice heard by completing the K-12 School Quality Survey. I'd like our parents to know that this survey will be on the homepage of each school's website as well as on our district website. Additionally, a link will be sent out to every family through Parents Square. And if you're still having trouble finding the link, feel free to call any school and we will surely help you. This Monday is a holiday in honor of Martin Luther King. So as we continue to work hard for our amazing students, I'm choosing to end my comments with his words. Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are we doing for others? Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you and thank you to all of our staff members who came and gave comments on behalf of everybody. We appreciate those. We're now on to public comments. Pat, how many requests to speak do we have?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, thank you. Board Bylaw 39323, Meeting Conduct establishes the guidelines and the following process applies. Speakers will be called in the order you registered on the electronic request-to-speak device. Names are displayed on the monitors. Please watch for your name to appear in line up at the designated numbers behind the mics. So you'll see on the floor, there's numbers 1, 2, 3. Please utilize those. On, once the recording secretary announces the first name, request to speak will no longer be accepted. Mr. Cruz, can you please explain the public comment guidelines?
Speakers, you have up to three minutes to address the board. You cannot donate your time. One person at the mic at a time. If you read on behalf of an absent person, that will be considered your time. Begin comments when the clock starts. Please refer to Board Policy 1312.1 for the procedure regarding complaints against an employee. And lastly, speakers may not approach the dais anytime the board is in session. Please give any materials you wish distributed to the board to the recording secretary.
Correction, that's 18 requests to speak. First speaker is Cecil Howell, Senior, followed by Cecil Howell, Junior, followed by Kelly Weathers.
All right. Hello, board members. My name is Cecil Howell and I am the salutatorian of Chino High School. I'm also a three-sport varsity athlete and the captain of the tennis team. Today is also my 18th birthday. And instead of going out tonight to celebrate it, I'm here to speak on behalf of somebody that helped me become the man that I am today. As a three-sport varsity athlete, tennis captain and salutatorian of the class of 25, I know that Mr. Hinkle, I know Mr. Hinkle in his capacity as an athletic director, coach and academic mentor. And although I'm not fully familiar with his legal situation right now, I believe that the positive impact that he has made on our campus should play a role in this decision regarding the future of his career. In my time at Chino High School, Mr. Hinkle has been instrumental to my success. In fact, he is actually the reason why I transferred to Chino High School in the first place. As an aspiring professional tennis athlete, Coach Hinkle was able to understand my goals and aspirations like no other. As a result of his understanding and careful accommodations for me, I've been able to achieve MVP title in the number two and three ranks throughout my two years in high school tennis. In my two years in Chino High School sports programs, it has become clear that this appreciation for Mr. Hinkle and his contributions to the athletic program is shared with hundreds of coaches and athletes at our school. From all the 2:00 AM announcements to my tennis team and all the times that I see him at our sports events, it's very clear that he takes his job seriously. And as much as I would like to see him take a break, if he still has the passion to help our athletes at our school, I believe that it is only fair that I support him in doing so. So on behalf of the Chino High School Boys Tennis Team, Cross Country Team and Soccer Team and the hundreds of other athletes at Chino High School, we hope you consider the irreplaceable impact of Mr. Hinkle as the athletic director when making this decision about his career. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chino Valley Unified School District. My name is Amado Somahau. I'm a freshman at Chino High and a member of the freshman football team, the wrestling team and the tennis team. I was there the day that Jason passed away. I am fully aware of the events that transpired that day. I prefer not to speak about that as it weighs heavily on my heart. What I can say with 100% certainty is that throwing Mr. Hinkle and Coach Rosso under the bus will not change anything. It hurts for me too, every single day. When I go to the pool, sometimes I think about it. Sometimes I didn't even want to go to the pool for a good two months. But I know Mr. Hinkle personally and he's a good man. He cares about his students. He cares about the sports. He works hard to keep kids on campus and he works hard to keep his sports facility safe. He's been there for 30 years. I'm 15 years old. He's been at that school for, he's been doing this job for double my lifetime and to do something for that long, you really have to care about it. Many times I go to school and I talk to different teachers and custodians and I can feel, I can hear sometimes that they're just there to do their job. They just want to get the money. They just want to get it done with, get through the day and go home. Mr. Hinkle's different. He cares. He cares about the students. He cares about the sports. He cares about his team. I may be walking down the street and he'll see me and he'll wave hi, even if I don't see him. He welcomes me into the tennis team even though he knows I have wrestling and football, so I won't be able to practice here. He welcomes me with open arms, always. He's always there. And he works hard. So then why would we ruin his life for something that happened so far back? I think about it too. But what happened, happened. Jason's gone. My teammate's gone. And firing Coach Hinkle, ruining Jason, ruining Lower's life, it's not going to change anything. It's not going to fix anything. We're all here for the students. So why would we fire somebody who would be good to the students and who would help the students out? For 30 years, 30 years, he's been here working to make sure that we feel comfortable. For 30 years, 30 years, he's been here working to make sure that we feel comfortable in the sports environment and we'll feel, we feel safe. He's had a great impact on my life, my brother's life. In fact, it's the reason he even went to Chino High and the reason I'm going to Chino High, too. I'm heavily, I'm 100% against firing Coach Hinkle and Mr. LaRosa. Thank you.
Kelly Weathers.
First and foremost, I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak and for the sacrifice you guys do in our community and your service on the school board. Mr. Nah, for coming out and speaking with us as we rallied outside, it means a lot to us. As I'm sure you're aware, I'm here to advocate for Chino High Athletics Director, Mr. Hinkle, and Coach LaRosa from the football team at Chino High after the incident that happened last summer. Let me say our hearts and prayers go out to the fan family, and they've had our prayers and love ever since we found out about the accident. We do understand that accidents happen and sometimes are preventable, but this one was labeled an accident. And we're hoping that you really give us your thoughtfulness and consideration and accommodation to keep Hinkle and LaRosa here at Chino High. The parents here today are just like me, you know, they, we fought for all of you guys, the board members. We wanted you guys to advocate for us, not silence us. You know, we were part of that movement, too. I've worked at Chino High for years, and my, my dad went to Chino High, my kids, one graduated Chino High, went to Rhodes. You know, one still goes to Chino High. My son Evan Gray, he wanted me to share this tonight as he was unable to attend. He said, and I quote, "Coach Hinkle has been a very influential figure in my life since I met him. He has been with me through many years of hardships and struggles. He has always been there for me, not only as an athletics director and coach, but as a friend. You could ask any former alumni, and they will all attest to his commitment and caring of his students," end quote. Last summer, Mr. Hinkle showed up to support my boys after their father died in May, and he's just irreplaceable, irreplaceable to our high school, and we just urgently wish that you guys consider the impact, the future of our kids, and the sports program, too. There's no athletic director that could fill his shoes and give the students the kind of support, opportunities, attention, and commitment that he can. Coach LaRosa has been a transformative influence in Chino High football. More than that, he deeply cares for the kids as well. With his efforts and leadership, the team would not have had the success it had since COVID and the shutdown. Neither Hinkle or LaRosa were present during the accident. To my knowledge, there were three coaches that were on duty and very capable that followed protocol. So we just are asking you to, you know, rely on your decision to represent us, the community, because we're letting you know what we want. We voted for you, so we're asking for you to advocate for us, because we know these administrators, we know these coaches, and they're here and they, they bring it for our kids every day. Thank you.
Amado Hall, Howell.
Hello. Good evening, board. So I, I'm here as a, as a parent. I'm here not as an adversary. You know, I look here and I see some friendly faces. I see, I see a board that is really stood up for our students, and I appreciate the work that you've done. Now, today, I'm here to advocate on behalf of Mr. Hinkle. He cares about these kids. I'm also here to speak on behalf of Mr. Miller, who's the principal. You know, these two men are the reason why I am at Chino High. And it's very rare to find administrators who care as deeply as these two men care about these kids. I sent my son out. He was the one who jumped into the pool and pulled this young man out of the pool. He was the one who gave him mouth-to-mouth resuscitation for him to cough up blood. He's been through quite a bit. He shouldn't have gone through what he went through. And I can't say who's responsible, but I can say that a thorough investigation has not been conducted, because if a thorough investigation had been conducted, then my son would have been spoken to. He had a call from Mr. Miller, who was very concerned about him. He had a call from Mr. Hinkle, who was very concerned about him. He didn't get a call from anyone else at the district. So to not conduct a thorough investigation and then suddenly point the finger at Mr. Hinkle and say, "You're the fall guy," that's not just, it's not just. I'm a very protective father. I'm extremely protective as a father, and I'm not a stranger to justice and litigation. I was approached by a couple of attorneys in terms of a lawsuit against either the school or the district because of what happened to my son. And the two reasons why I decided not to, why I decided to pull my punches was Mr. Miller and Mr. Hinkle, because I didn't want to take any action that was going to hurt their careers, because I know the type of men that they are. And so for the district to look at either of these men, point the finger and say, "You're the fall guy," hmm, that would be unjust, and it would remove my incentive to not proceed. And so I hope that the district doesn't use either of these men as an example.
Jovita Donovan.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, President Shaw, board members, superintendent, and all other staff members. I am present to obtain clarity regarding the termination of Coach LaRosa and Mr. Hinkle in relation to the tragic accident that occurred this summer. The entire Chino High community acknowledges the significance of this incident. However, it is unacceptable to dismiss two individuals who have consistently made a positive impact on our children's lives. Coach LaRosa, who has earned the love and respect of my son, demonstrates exceptional dedication to our players by monitoring their academic performance, health, and overall well-being. For many, including my son, he serves as a vital male role model and father figure. Similarly, Mr. Hinkle is the cornerstone of our athletics department and sports program, and his absence will undoubtedly hinder the progress of all sports. I strongly urge you to reconsider your decision, taking into account the profound consequences it will have on the mental health and well-being of our students. I implore you to recognize the invaluable contribution Coach LaRosa makes and take the immediate action to rectify this situation. Thank you.
Nick Burgadis.
Thank you. My name is Nick Burgadis. Some of you know me. I was past president of the Chino High School Football Boosters and Sports Boosters, so I have a really good relationship with Mr. Hinkle, Mr. LaRosa, and Mr. Miller. I, family, I've had kids go through Chino High School since 2008 till last year. I know a lot of people on staff. Coach LaRosa is an outstanding coach. He's just an all-around good person, and for this tragedy to happen, I just, it's just horrible. But he's there for the kids. He's not just a coach, he's a mentor. He's an advocate for the kids. As a football coach, he brought in an academic advisor just to make sure that these kids stay eligible, but that they can graduate and succeed after high school. I've been around sports a long time. I don't know any coach that's done that. And for Mr. Hinkle, that guy puts in hours after hour after hour for that school. He nominated me for the Kit Hulk Loyalty Award, and that's given by all the athletic directors in, in the valley. Every athletic director that was there came up to Mr. Hinkle because they respect him. They know what time he puts in. He returns calls. He knows everybody. He's there for all these kids. He, he can go to this school any time of day, and he is there. I know, Mr. Nah, you see him all the time. And I invited you guys out to some of the events of the high school, and you attended, and Hinkle's there. Him and LaRosa, they worked well together. I, I would not have put in the time to work for these kids if I didn't have their support. Hinkle, Miller, and LaRosa, these guys work hard, and they're there for the kids, and they deserve better than this. Thank you.
Luke Stam.
Hello, board members, Nah, Cruz, Cervantes, and President Shaw. My name is Luke Stam. I'm a junior at Chino High School. I have been a student athlete enrolled in Chino, Chino High School since the summer coming into my freshman year. Ever since the beginning, when I was in the weight room, Coach LaRosa became the first consistent positive male role model in my life. That is who and what Coach LaRosa is. Coach LaRosa guided me not only on the football field, football field, but in academics and life in general. Under his guidance, academics always came first, not only has the football team been successful in the classroom consistently maintaining good grades, but we were amazing on the field. Under Coach LaRosa, we have won three league titles in six years, reached the second round of CIF three years in a row, and even had an undefeated season. Coach is exceptional at being there for us no matter the situation, whether it is physical, emotional, or mental. He helps us navigate challenges and overcome them, building us up as players and stronger men in the community. I was at the pool when the event happened, June 28, 2024. I filled out numerous police reports and was pulled out of class to speak with officers. The district claims to have done an investigation, yet no one who was at the pool was ever actually spoken to by the district to determine the events of that day. I ask of you to please reconsider the termination of Head Coach LaRosa. Please do not deny the future Cowboys, the leadership of His Excellency. Thank you.
John Wachowski.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about someone who has profoundly impacted my family and so many others, Athletic Director, Mr. Michael Hinkle. As a parent of a former Chino High School athlete who now competes at the collegiate level, I've seen firsthand the difference a strong and principled leader can make. Mr. Hinkle is devoted to our kids. He ensures every athlete competes on a level playing field, no matter the sport, while always prioritizing the growth of the class, in the classroom and their well-being. What sets Mr. Hinkle apart is his unwavering support of all of our teams. He makes it a point to attend several sporting events each day to cheer on our athletes. Not many athletic directors do this, but Chino High School were fortunate to have a leader who shows up, rain or shine, to support our kids. During the pandemic, when everything came to a halt, Mr. Hinkle didn't just manage the uncertainty, he led. He worked tirelessly to create a safe return-to-sports program, not only to get our athletes back in action, but gave them hope. For my daughter, it wasn't just about playing again, it was about having a lifeline during a difficult time. Even beyond that, Mr. Hinkle's integrity and vision has set the tone for our entire sports program. He built a culture of accountability, respect, and excellence where athletes are pushed to do the best on and off the field. Leaders like Mr. Hinkle are rare. His unwavering commitment to our kids, his presence at their games, and his leadership during tough times have left a lasting impact on so many families, including mine. I urge you to support Mr. Hinkle and allow him to continue leading Chino High School Athletics Program with the same integrity and dedication that we, that have had made such a positive difference in our community. Thank you very much.
Scott Rosen.
Hi, my name is Scott Rosson, and I'm a teacher in the district for 26 years and a parent of two former student athletes at Chino High School. When bad things happen, it's human nature to seek answers, to assign responsibility, and try to make sense of the senseless. Today, it's on the board agenda to remove Coach Hinkle as Athletic Director from Chino High School. But we have to ask ourselves, what does this action truly accomplish? Firing him will undo the tragedy of June, ease the pain of those affected, or bring healing to our community, and it's only going to hurt the students who remain at Chino High School. Firing someone may feel like action, but it's not a solution. It's just a short-term move to make higher-ups feel like they've done something. But no one in our district is a detective or a member of the court system, so we shouldn't act like that. And letting go of Mr. Hinkle or Coach LaRosa seems to highlight the inconsistencies of our district. I don't really know Coach LaRosa, but I do know Coach Hinkle. He's a great man. Not only is he a great man, he's a fantastic athletic director. My children played sports there for seven years, and he was beyond visible. You would have thought that there were multiple Hinkles. To reiterate what Nick said, I went to a Citrus Valley Award banquet last year, where there were multiple athletic directors from the San Gabriel Valley and Inland Empire, and it was clear that all of the athletic directors admired Coach Hinkle. Obviously, he does a great at his job, and he's a super person. So in the end, nothing good comes from this. Who's better off if we make this decision? Certainly not the students or the community of Chino High School. Thank you.
Pastor Valdez.
Good evening, Dr. Enfield, School Board. My name is Pastor Valdez. First, I would like to add to, officially add to the record that we had over 100 people outside and people willing to speak at the closed session, but we were denied access. And we were also told that Chino High would not be on the closed session agenda. I'm a parent of a junior at Chino High School who plays on the football team. My son is the fourth child that my wife and I have had attend Chino High, so we have been a part of the Chino family for over 15 years. And during that time, we have always felt that there was a sense of transparency and trust between the district, the school, and the families, while I'm here today to tell you that all of that has now been lost. On Monday, January 6, 2025, we received an email from Mr. Miller stating that he had spoken to my son, along with all other players on all levels of the football program, regarding the decision to part ways with Mr. LaRosa. No, nothing was said whether it was a district decision or Mr. LaRosa had resigned. It was just, we're parting ways. As you can imagine, what their reaction might have been to this, as we were in shock, as we as parents were in shock, and that is that we do not see him every day. Regardless if it was a district decision or that Coach LaRosa made it himself, I believe that as parents, we have the right to know. And I have more written, but I'm going to go off the cuff. Coach LaRosa has been an impact at the school for the six years that he's been there. Both of my sons have played for him, both of my, both of my sons have learned from him, and they've grown. My older boy has been playing college ball for four years now. As to Mr. Hinkle and Mr. Miller, I think they have a race as to see who can be at the school longer, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, 9:00 PM. But what we do know is that they are always there, and not because they want to be there, because they'd like to be there. They are there for our kids. So I ask you to think about that, you know, think about the decision that you're going to make, because in the end, nobody wins in these cases. Thank you.
Amanda Swagger.
Good evening, Dr. Enfield, Board, Cabinet, our wonderful student representative, and the wonderful group of people that support our community at Chino High School behind me. Before I start my standard comments here, I do want to say I stand in solidarity for all the people affected by the tragedy that occurred this summer, but also the action that the board is proposing against several members of our family at Chino High School. The events, I wasn't there for, and I don't know much about them, but I can tell you that the athletics program at Chino High School has changed some of our students from people that it might have been a risk of dropping out to individuals that have excelled both in school and in life, and I'm proud to have many of those students go through our program. On the actual comments this evening, I do want to talk a little bit about optics for a moment. I'm here to speak on Board Agenda Item 2B4, the compensation increase for our school board. First, let me state that I fully agree with the compensation of the school board. 5% is a tiny amount per month. We're talking less than $220 per month, less than around $3,000 per year. The optics of the situation, though, are scary, because many people see that the board has to vote on their own compensation. Let me address that first. The board doesn't have a choice here. The district can't automatically grant the 5% increase. District ed code requires us to actually vote on that idea. Also, for those of you who are not aware, who see a number like 5%, just keep in mind the salary schedules, the compensation for our school board members are under $10,000 per year. 5% for someone like myself, who is on a high tier making over $110,000, would be huge. But 5% for a school board member for all they do for our district is absolutely tiny. So keep in mind that while some of you may be upset about the logistics of dealing with this situation, remember, they don't have a choice here. Support what they do for our district. Finally, many of Finally, many individuals in our district and our family and our community here have been affected by the disasters, the fires, the winds, the power outages and everything in our community. Including myself, many community members are also affected because their family members are first responders, both police, fire, and military. I've been proud to see all the support that our community has brought to these efforts. We all go through life-changing events, and it's not those, it's those things that make us human, make us resilient. And here, we're Chino.
David Chavez.
Good evening. School boards represent, uh, the taxpayers, the community, and the students. Uh, our community belief is that these recent decisions, uh, are not being made with the students' best interests in mind. I'm the father of a freshman football player. And these boys have suffered enough, you know? Not only are men's lives being tampered with and affected and damaged, but the, these boys. Um, y- yet, you know, you can, you continue to take. These deep, these thirteen-year-old boys had to witness a tragic death of their friend. They'll all live with that for the rest of their lives. Some of these boys are heroes, yet they were never acknowledged. A couple of these boys in this room here today swam to the bottom of that pool and lifted their friend out and onto the deck. Somehow, they found the strength to do that. One boy in this room initiated CPR. Another boy in this room called nine-one-one. All of these boys watched as their friend lay dying in front of them. In our Chino community, we as parents share the anxiety and the fear that our children all struggle with as a result of that tragic day. We understand that someone must be held responsible for this tragic accident that led to the loss of a precious child. We get it. And they have been. These boys lost their entire freshman coaching staff that loved and cared about them. These boys saw all these men as leaders, as father figures, and they were taken away from them, and I get it, I get it, I do. But that pound of flesh has been paid, yet you continue to take. These boys find comfort and solace on the field. It is an escape for them. Coach LaRosa and Mr. Hinkle provide that for them. They provide the continuity and stability that these boys so desperately need. Coach LaRosa is the leader of these boys. He gives them the hope, the strength, the motivation to keep going, to keep fighting. What he provides for these boys, for many, is just as healing as the soothing words of a counselor. These boys have suffered enough. You are taking away those people that make up their support system, those people who have gone through it with them. I want to mention Mr. Miller. I have the utmost respect for him, as he has been there through it all. He had the respect and the courage to show up at Jason's vigil at the football field and offer words of comfort to us all and lead us in prayer. He continues to offer comfort to us all. Where or with whom will it stop? I'm afraid of who is next. You're harming the lives of good men and you're not serving the, our children's best interest. Think back upon those boys at the pool that day, acknowledge their bravery, and see if you could find it within yourselves to muster some of that bravery within you and do the right thing for these boys.
Luke Stam.
Hello, my name is Pablo Valdez and I'm an eleventh grade student at Chino High School. Um, I'm a part of Chino's ASB, and I'm also part of the varsity football and baseball teams at Chino. I'm here today to talk about, um, the character of Coach LaRosa and Mr. Hinkle, which all of our, uh, athletes and students seen throughout their time at Chino. Um, firstly, I want to say I've known Coach LaRosa since his start at Chino, as he coached, uh, my brother for his last two years of high school football, and he has also coached me for my last three years. And I want to give a quick story about Coach LaRosa. Um, my freshman year, I was talking with Coach LaRosa, and I think he knew that, uh, I was a little nervous because my brother had been a great player before me and that, uh, I had big shoes to fill. And he, he came up to me and he told me, he said, if you want to make yourself stand out, or if you want to stand out, make yourself stand out. And I don't even know if he remembers these words, but these stuck with me. I'm sure many of my, uh, fellow players here can attest to this and have similar stories. But he makes you want to not only be better on the field, but in the classroom and in all aspects of your life. As previously mentioned, I am a part of ASB, and what comes with that is that we go to, uh, many of our sporting events to go, uh, support our sports teams. And someone that you can always count on to be there, supporting, uh, every sports team, no matter who it is, is Mr. Hinkle. Because Mr. Hinkle cares about each and every student that goes through the sports programs at Chino High School. I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Hinkle can always, can always be seen at our sporting events, cheering on our students no matter what it is. So I urge you, please, to look at yourselves and do what is right for these two men of character.
Raul, Raul Magadan, Raul. Raul is the next speaker.
Good evening.
Raul is the next speaker, Magadan.
Uh, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Uh, my name is Raul Magadan. I'm an upcoming junior football player at Don Lugo High School. Uh, recently, our head football coach, Joshua Knight, resigned, and our offensive coordinator, Daniel Fiero, was supposed to get the job as head coach. Yesterday, our principal gave someone else a job who's not as qualified as Coach Fiero. The, uh, I'm sorry. All of, uh, the players and the parents were not happy with this decision. With Coach Fiero as our assistant head coach and offensive coordinator, we won league championships back-to-back these past seasons, and he's been coaching for fifteen years on the varsity level as an offensive coordinator, as an, as an assistant head coach. He has helped many student athletes earn scholarships for college. Just this last year, we've had seven student athletes receive scholarships to play college football. In his last two seasons with him, we broke five school offensive records. He's a great coach, father figure, mentor, and mentor to many of our athletes. With Coach Fiero as our coach, we build a family here at Don Lugo, and it's sad to see it breaking apart because Coach Fiero is not our head coach. Once you've all heard the news, our teammates were talking about quitting or leaving Don Lugo. If this happens, Don Lugo's athletics will suffer, and not just football, but many of our football players are multi-sport athletes. My siblings and I have played sports for our whole lives, and I'm fully aware that a good coach can have a huge impact on the team and players. And the only person that my teammates and their parents want as head coach is Daniel Fiero. Thank you.
Jacob Silphy.
Hello, Board members. My name is Jacob Silphy and I'm an upcoming junior for the Don Lugo Football Team. I'm here on the subject of the new head coach of Don Lugo Football. Coach Joshua Knight resigned recently, and our team was expecting Coach Fiero to take the position of head coach. However, the position was instead given to Coach Robles. First of all, I want to say that the environment that these coaches have made for the last two years have been made out of love and care. These coaches have done great things in building more than just a team. We have become a family. Coach Fiero and our other coaches have always been there for us when we needed help. We always knew that if anything went wrong, we could... We know if anything went wrong. My bad. We always knew that if anything went wrong, we could go to him and he would guide us through the hard times. Coach Fiero is an amazing coach that is more than qualified for the job. It has been sad to see my teammates lose hope through the, throughout the day, believing that the last two years of building this family would be gone in one day. We believe with Coach Fiero leading our football team, we can continue to accomplish great things. Thank you.
Lisa G.
Good evening. Uh, congratulations to Mr. Cervantes, Mr. Nah, Mr. Cruz on winning their school board races. However, it's important that our community understands who the real winner is, because it's not our students, teachers, or families. The real winner is the out-of-town contractor who now owns this board, Carlos Reynoso. Mr. Reynoso has bought and paid for every member of this board by donating, donating nearly two hundred thousand dollars over the last two election cycles. By doing so, he has guaranteed himself millions of dollars in contracts from this district for his construction company, Star Hardware. Despite your insistence about closed bids, you know full well that you do indeed see the names of the vendors when you vote on contracts, so you can stop gaslighting us. This is an obvious conflict of interest. I call on this board once again to do the ethical thing and set a fifty-five-hundred-dollar amount cap on the amount any one person can donate to a school board candidate, like so many other boards have already done. Of course, we know you won't, and the corruption and fiscal irresponsibility will continue until voters pay attention and vote you out. One more thing, I find it reprehensible that the same board that has willfully and repeatedly violated state law wasted hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars on frivolous lawsuits, allowed our valued teachers to be called groomers by your supporters, and served only to spread disinformation, division, and fear in our community, thinks that they are entitled to yet another pay raise just months after the last one. Even worse, you have cut fifty percent of your board meetings from the calendar and reduced and restricted speaker time at meetings because you want to silence your critics. But guess what? Last time I looked, we still live in a democracy. But with all five of you on the same side, there's no telling what kind of corruption and mismanagement will go unchecked. I urge this community to play, pay close attention. Thank you.
Angela Romero.
Hello. My name is Angela Romero, and I am a mom of this city. I grew up in this city, and I believe in each and every one of you as our board. I do not believe that you were purchased. I actually know many of you, and I know your heart is in, with the community, and I, along with a lot of the community, voted you in, you were not purchased in, and so that is not what I'm here to speak about. But, um, I felt like that is necessary to stand up for that as a person of the community who believes in you. And I believe that the reason why I'm here and how I believe in you, these students believe in their coaches, and if any of you have ever played sports, you have to buy into the coach, you have to believe what the coach believes and believe that they believe in you. Because if you don't believe that they believe in you, then you're not going to follow them. You're not going to think that they, they're supporting you, and you're not going to give it your all and be your best. And the team isn't going to come together with camaraderie and succeed and grow. Well, if you look at Don Lugo, my son went from Chino Hills High to Don Lugo in the football program. And that football program was led by Coach Knight for the past two years, and they've succeeded greatly. And he's also succeeded greatly with the hand of Coach Fiero. And Coach Fiero, we all thought as parents and as students, that he was going to take over when Coach Knight was leaving, but we found out recently that he wasn't. I've also heard that the coaching staff might leave. Not only that, you see things starting to crumble, things starting to fall apart. A lot of the students might leave, a lot of the kids might leave, and that leaves with this new coach that I heard is coming in, the kids have not bought into him. Somebody else have appointed him to this position, not listening to what the players actually want, not listening to who's been there for the players, who's coached these players, who's created this team, this camaraderie. And that is what these boys need. If this school and this team is going to keep on succeeding and keep thriving, they need somebody that they've bought into, and that's somebody that supports them. And that's Coach Fiero and the staff that's also there with him, and not this other coach that has taken over, that is supposedly going to get this position, because they think that he's more qualified. Who is more qualified than the players themselves who think that's going to lead them? That's who should lead them, is who they believe in and who they have purchased, who they believe is going to take them to the next level. On behalf of my son, he wanted, who's not here, he wanted me to say a couple of words. He's funner. I don't know if that has any value, but for me, I want to go, if I'm going to do something that I have love in a sport, it's got to be fun, otherwise what's the point? You don't want to just do a thousand push-ups or sit-ups or run laps forever. You want to be there because you want to be there. He has a better plan. The better plan is something that these students, these players believe in. They believe in his plan because they've bought into his ideology, a better future for the school, a better future for the football program. So I'm...
Thank you, and thank you to all of our speakers. Um, we are now on to changes and deletions. Pat, are there any changes or deletions?
The following changes or deletions are on the agenda. Item three C one, page fifty-three, student expulsion cases, delete cases twenty-four, twenty-five dash twenty-five and twenty-four, twenty-five dash twenty-nine. And item three E one, page one oh five, certificated classified personnel is yellow sheeted.
Thank you, Pat. And just a note, um, unfortunately, the board cannot make any comments to any public comments right now. If they will address it, they'll address it at the end when their comments are. So just, I know a lot of people are new in here, and my first board meeting too, I was hoping the board would address us. But just so you know, they, if they do, they, it will be at the end of the meeting. I just want to give you a heads up if you are waiting to hear anything that anybody wants to say. Um, we're now on to action items, and our first item is two A one. It's proclamation for National School Counseling Week, February three, uh, third through seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. It recommends that the Board of Education adopt the proclamation for National School Counseling Week, February third through seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Nah. May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cervantes. Board, I'll go ahead and turn those off, and if you have any comments or questions or discussions, please use your light system and I will key you in. Seeing that there's none, I just want to make a comment about, um, our counselors, counselors and all different levels. I, as a mother and of two students here in the district, I appreciate them. I see you. A lot of parents appreciate everything that you do. They don't see what you do every day. They don't see, you know, all the ins and outs of being there for our students when, um, they're in school and we as parents are not there. So again, we appreciate and we hope that you're celebrated, not just every day, but during February third through seventh, you're also ex, you feel extra special because you are extra special to our students and our families. So thank you. Um, hearing nothing further, Board members, please register, one second. Register your vote. Sorry, guys, we're just having a technical difficulty. There it goes. Okay. Preferential?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes with the vote of five to zero. Next item is two A two, resolution twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five through thirty-six, recognizing February as Career and Technical Education Month. Recommends that the Board of Education adopt resolution twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six, recognizing February as a career and technical education month. May I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Nah. May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Any comments, questions, or discussions from the board? You can use your light system. Hearing nothing further. I also just want to make one comment, and I appreciate everything that our staff does in regards to getting our students who are not college-bound, career and technical-ready. We have a lot of programs, we have a lot of great teachers and staff members in those positions assisting our students, and our goal has always been, eh, even as a sitting commissioner member for our, our OP Baldi View program, is to make sure our students know about these, because they don't always know about it, out the, uh, about these things. I know we have a lot of new people in the audience, so please take a look, um, with your local high school. There is so many opportunities for our students who are not, you know, bound to go to a four-year and they are career or technical, they want to get a certificate. We have those opportunities while they're in high school, so the minute they graduate, they can go right into the workforce and succeed at the goals that they have. So please take advantage of that. Our staff does an excellent job. Baldi View does an amazing job, and I'm grateful that they, that we have these opportunities for our kids. Um, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Preferential?
Yes.
Thank you. Waiting for one more board member. Okay. And, eh, the motion passes with a vote of five to zero. The next item is two B one, public hearing and ratification of the tentative agreement between the Chino Valley Unified School District and the Associated Chino Teachers affected July first, two thousand and twenty-four. Recommends that the Board of Education conduct a public hearing and ratify the tentative agreement between the Chino Valley School District and the Associated Teachers affected July first, two thousand and twenty-four. I now open the public hearing at seven thirty-two PM. Pat, are there any speakers? Thank you.
Once again, good evening, Board. I'll keep my comments short here. First, at the last meeting, I thanked our district personnel for a quick negotiation process, and we retain that, thanks. It's nice to know that from the time the contract was negotiated with our negotiating...
amendments consisting of an increase to the Health and Welfare Benefit cap from $10,000 to $11,350, effective July 1st, 2024, because the district cannot change the benefits contribution mid-year. The deputy superintendent, associate superintendent, and assistant superintendents receive a one-time off-schedule payment of $1,350 for the 2024-2025 school year, in alignment with ACT and CHAMP pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, Subdivision C3. The Board provides this oral summary for all components of compensation, new and existing salary and fringe benefits for the following local agency executives, deputy superintendent, associate superintendent, business services, assistant superintendent's curriculum instruction innovation and support, assistance superintendent facilities, planning and operations. 261,087 annually for the deputy superintendent Grace Park, 4% longevity annually, one-time off-schedule payment in the amount of $1,350. That's $1,350. 4% doctoral stipend annually, health and welfare benefits cap of $11,350, and 550 monthly mileage, organizational membership to AXA in the amount of $1,768.56 annually, and vacation and sick leave, 24 annual vacation days and 22 annual sick days. $251,045 annually for the associate superintendent business services Sandra Chen, 8% longevity annually, one-time of scheduled payment in the amount of $1,350, 4% CBO stipend annually, health and welfare benefits cap of $11,350, and 550 monthly mileage, organizational membership to AXA in the amount of $1,768.56 annually, and vacation and sick leave, 24 annual vacation days and 22 annual sick days. I may have made a mistake on the top, so I'll go and read it again. On the 261,800, I mean, and $87 annually, if you go back, I just want to correct because I think I said cents. So my apologies. I caught it mid-mint. And then now we have $190,777 annually for the assistant superintendent curriculum instruction innovation for support. Luke Hackney, 2% longevity annually, one-time off-schedule payment in the amount of $1,350, health and welfare benefits cap of $11,350, and 550 monthly mileage, organizational membership to AXA in the amount of $1,695.60 annually, and vacation and sick leave, 24 annual vacation days and 22 annual sick days. $214,596 annually for the assistant superintendent facilities, planning and operation, Greg Statura, 10% longevity annually, one-time off-schedule payment in the amount of $1,350, health and welfare benefits cap of $11,350, and 550 monthly mileage, organizational membership to AXA in the amount of $1,768.56 annually, and vacation and sick leave, 24 annual vacation days and 22 annual sick days. I may have made a mistake on the top, so I'll go and read it again. On the 261,800, I mean, and $87 annually, if you go back, I just want to correct because I think I said cents. So my apologies. I caught it mid-mint. And then now we have $190,777 annually for the assistant superintendent curriculum instruction innovation for support. Luke Hackney, 2% longevity annually, one-time off-schedule payment in the amount of $1,350, health and welfare benefits cap of $11,350, and 550 monthly mileage, organizational membership to AXA in the amount of $1,695.60 annually, and vacation and sick leave, 24 annual vacation days and 22 annual sick days. $214,596 annually for the assistant superintendent facilities, planning and operation, Greg Statura, 10% longevity annually, one-time off-schedule payment in the amount of $1,350, health and welfare benefits cap of $11,350, and 550 monthly mileage, organizational membership to AXA in the amount of $1,768.56 annually, and vacation and sick leave, 24 annual vacation days and 22 annual sick days. There are no other elements and compensation recommended as part of the executive-level contracts. May I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Na. May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cervantes. Comments, questions, or discussions from the board? Mr. Monroe, go ahead.
I hate to be a Debbie Downer. You know, it wasn't that long we voted on these contracts. And I voiced my objection to some of the wording in the contracts. And not only are we voting to give the rightful raise like everybody else, but in doing so, we're renewing the contract, if I'm understanding this right, to another four years.
It would be adding another year to the contract.
Yeah, okay. So I don't know why we have four-year contracts if every year we renew it to another four-year contract. I just think that does us a disservice. I understand that Cabinet gets a little bit nervous when their contracts get down. For them, this is best-case scenario. If they can keep renewing their contracts to four years, it ensures if they're ever asked to leave that they get the maximum payout that we have to pay the most amount. And as something that we're here to oversee and have oversight over the district, I don't think that's beneficial to us. I think that's something that as a board we should look at going forward, because every time if we leave and somebody wants to go to a change, they're on the hook for a whole lot of money. There's a reason why you have a four-year contract and you let it get down. At that time, if it got into the last year where Cabinet members were getting nervous about if we wanted him or not, well, then you would enter into negotiation or ask to, or maybe sit down. I just think as a board, we owe it more to look at these contracts. I'm all for giving them the raise. I'm not for extending the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Do you want to use your light? Hearing nothing further, board members, please. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Na.
So are we adding four more years right now?
No, you're just adding one more year.
Yes.
Yeah, you're keeping it at four. Yeah.
Any more comments, questions?
Let me say something.
Turn your mic. Hold on. There you go.
You have Dr. Enfield, so vision, goals. That takes a while, right, to set up vision and goals?
Yes, that's correct.
Attracting good people takes incentives.
Did you turn off your mic again?
Incentives, right? Attracting the best people. Right, Dr. Enfield?
There it goes.
Right, incentives for your... Is it working?
Yeah, attracting.
Yes, it's a way to retract people or to retain them.
And it also creates stability.
Yes, absolutely.
So there is positive when it comes to having contracts, four-years contracts.
Yes, I bring that forward to the board to extend the contract for my cabinet for one more year. I look at the performance of my cabinet, and they are, I think, very highly of them. And so they perform year in and year out for me. And as part of that, I'm saying, hey, you've done such a good job. I want to renew it and keep you at four years because I want you to stay here in this district. When I look at Greg Statura, Greg, I think, has been here over 30-some years in the district. I think he's earned that. 30-plus years in the district, I think he earns that extra year on his contract. Ms. Chen, you've been in the district, what, 25, 26, 27 years, something like that? I think Ms. Chen has earned that extra year.
And 26 positive.
Yes, and I look at Ms. Freed, you've been 25-plus years in the district. I think she's earned that extra year. You know, Grace Park and I have been here around the same time. I think she's earned that. Luke has been here the least, but I think Luke has earned that in his first year. So I bring that forward to the board as they do really good work. Why wouldn't I bring that to them and say, hey, board, they do really, really good work. I want them to stay here and be a part of this and continue that work. I don't want them... It's a way of showing respect to my board. That's what it really is, Mr. Cruz.
Thank you.
I have one comment. I know, working closely with Dr. Enfield, and I mean, very closely, he dedicates a lot of time to answering a lot of questions of mine. I know if there's a problem, he's addressed it, and if there isn't a problem and there's praise, he's addressed it. I appreciate every single one of our Cabinet members. Reading this out loud even makes me uncomfortable because I know as a mother, I was like, oh, my gosh, they make so much money. But that's how much money, again, like how our teachers, you know, we hear that they're not fairly compensated. Our pay schedule is a certain way, and I think with their going rate in other districts, I know other districts reach out to them. I am in contact with other board members, and I see they have a hard time filling these positions with quality people who care about kids and the outcome of our students' success. I get your concerns, Mr. Monroe. The only thing I would encourage, just maybe working with Dr. Enfield a little bit closer. If you are, I mean, great, but if not, just work with them with your concerns. I know he's addressed my concerns on certain things with these things that will come up, and I have more clarity on why he does the things that he does. I get it. We all have families. We all want stability. You know, as my husband is the sole provider, of course, we want stability. And like you said, they're doing an excellent job. There's nothing to address. And I know with new boards coming in, the reality, I see it all over California, the people that don't want to go with the board's direction, they usually leave. And they don't, you don't have to pay out a huge salary. So I have, I mean, that's not that that can't happen. It would really come with some egregious thing that the board would encourage, or Dr. Enfield saw something egregious that he would have to get rid of one of the Cabinet members. So I just want to provide insight. There's, I mean, I get it. We all have different views on this. I just encourage all of us to work with Dr. Enfield closely and kind of see why he does the things that he does. I mean, to add another year when we're saying, hey, please don't go anywhere. We want you here. Our kids are succeeding. We're increasing enrollment. We're increasing test scores. I would hate to lose any one of them. I see them all doing everything they can for our students, and I just want to let you know again, it makes me uncomfortable reading this because people will judge the book by its color cover, but I really believe that you deserve every bit of this, and I appreciate all that you guys do. That's all I have to say. Mr. Cruz, you have your light back on.
Six superintendents visited our school, and they observed our programs, and one stated that this was a 1% school district. And the other one said that we're doing the right work for our students. So with that in mind, yeah, it is important to keep people here. And what you're doing is you're building trust too, trust with you and with your Cabinet that goes back and forth, the relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. And I just want to remind everybody, the superintendent, I don't like to use the word report, but technically reports to the board. The board's vision is what he has the responsibility to carry out and ensure our students' best outcomes, right, and success. So if it's not happening, we obviously can hold him accountable, but I think at this point, the numbers are moving and things are doing great. And Chino Valley has always been somewhere where, I mean, look at the Chino Way, right? You show up, you dedicate your time to protect each other, and that's what happens here in Chino. So again, I appreciate what you're doing. I appreciate your Cabinet members and what they're doing and also working directly and answering my questions when I do have them. With that said, I think we have no more comments on there. We will start a vote. Board members, please register your vote, and I have preferential?
Yes.
Thank you. I have four. Oh, my. There we go. And the motion passes with a vote of 4 to 1. The next item is item 2B4, Compensation Increase for the Board of Education, effective January 17, 2025. Recommend the Board of Education approve a 5% compensation increase for the Board of Education, effective January 17, 2025. May I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Na. May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Comments, questions, discussions from the board? If I see none, I'll go ahead and make my comments. I know that somebody said you just gave yourself one, but the reality is the board, according to education code, we are only allowed to get one a year. And we usually try to be considerate to bring it forward when the teacher's agreement has been made. So unfortunately, last year, there was incidents, and the agreement took all year, so we waited till the end of the year to finally bring that forward. And this year, thankfully and gratefully, it happened really quick, so we brought ours forward with theirs. I know, I appreciate Amanda stating the facts. The fact was when she said 200-something dollars, it's not per member. That's a total for all five members. It equates to 200-something dollars a month. I'm transparent. I think I, after taxes, maybe take home, I think, $800 or something around that. I could show you the exact amount a month. I don't get a car allowance. And I just want to let you know again, I, it makes me uncomfortable reading this because people will judge the book by its color cover, but I really believe that you deserve every bit of this and I appreciate all that you guys do. That's all I have to say. Mr. Cruz, you have your light back on.
Six superintendents visited our school and they observed our programs. And one stated that this was a 1% school district. And the other one said that we're doing the right work for our students. So with that in mind, yeah, it is important to keep people here. And what you're doing is you're building trust too. Trust with you and with your cabinet that goes back and forth, the relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. And I just want to remind everybody, the superintendent, I don't like to use the word report, but technically reports to the board. The board's vision is what he has the responsibility to carry out and ensure our students' best outcomes, right, and success. So if it's not happening, we obviously can hold him accountable. But I think at this point, the numbers are moving and things are doing great. And Chino Valley has always been somewhere where, I mean, look at the Chino Way, right? You show up, you dedicate your time to protect each other. And that's what happens here in Chino. So again, I appreciate what you're doing. I appreciate your cabinet members and what they're doing and also working directly and answering my questions when I do have them. With that said, I think we have no more comments on there. We will start a vote. Board members, please register your vote. And I have preferential?
Yes.
Thank you. I have four. Oh, mine. There we go. And the motion passes with a vote of four to one. The next item is item two B4. Compensation increase for the Board of Education effective January seventeen, twenty-twenty-five recommends the Board of Education approve a 5% compensation increase for the Board of Education effective January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. May I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Na. May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Comments, questions, discussions from the board? If I see none, I'll go ahead and make my comments. I know that somebody said you just gave yourself one, but the reality is the board, according to education code, we are only allowed to get one a year. And we usually try to be considerate to bring it forward when the teacher's agreement has been made. So unfortunately, last year, there was incidents and the agreement took all year. So we waited till the end of the year to finally bring that forward. And this year, thankfully and gratefully, it happened really quick. So we brought ours forward with theirs. I know, I appreciate Amanda stating the facts. The fact was, when she said two-hundred-something dollars, it's not per member, that's a total for all five members. It equates to two-hundred-something dollars a month. I'm transparent. I think I, after taxes, maybe take home, I think, eight hundred dollars or something around that. I could show you the exact amount a month. I don't get a car allowance. I alongside all my board members, really try to be at every event. I mean, Andy's sitting right here. She knows when one of us can't be there, it hurts me. But I also have two children in the district and a senior, and you guys know, parents of seniors, our activities are crazy right now. But with that said, it doesn't even cover your insurance right now with the way California is for your cars. But it's not about the money. And here's the thing, if the board doesn't want it, then they can, I think there's some way they can donate it back or not take it because I've seen that happen with past board members. And they can look into that with our staff. But the fact is, if you don't keep it equate, it doesn't give the stipend. There's stipends for a reason. And a new board coming in in four years, I want to protect them too. And if they don't want it, they're more than welcome to gift it back or do whatever it may that they do with it. With that said, I think I'm the only one that still has any comments, so we'll go ahead and if I don't see any other ones, register a vote. Preferential?
Yes.
Thank you. Board members, it's up. And the motion passes with a vote of five to zero. That includes, concludes action items. We're now on to consent. Board members, if you have an item to poll, please indicate so on your monitor. Seeing that there's no polls on the consent items, may I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Na, and thank you, Mr. Monroe, for seconding it. Board members, please register your vote. And preferential?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, there it goes. And the motion passes with a vote of five to zero. We're now on to information items. And we'll be hearing from our auditor, Scott Braddock from Ed Bailey, did I say that right? Ed Bailey, regarding items for A1, the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Independent Auditor's Annual Report and the item for C1, Measure G, Financial Performance Audit Report thereafter. We will hear any questions or comments.
Good evening. My name is Scott Braddock with Ed Bailey, the district's external auditors. And I will be going over the results of the twenty-three, twenty-four annual audit report. There are three main areas that we will report on as part of the annual audit. The first is the financial statements portion, which is the financials themselves, the balance sheet, income statement, footnotes, all the amounts that get reported essentially. The second area is the federal awards section. And the third area is the state awards section. We issue audit opinions in relation to each of these three areas. And for twenty-three, twenty-four, we issued unmodified opinions for each area. An unmodified opinion is essentially a clean audit opinion. There was nothing we identified that resulted in a modification of the opinion. So yeah, it's essentially a clean opinion in each of those areas. To begin with the financial statements portion of the audit, we visit the district throughout the year and we perform a review of internal controls over any area that can have an effect on financial reporting. Payroll, non-payroll, capital assets, HR processes, et cetera, anything that could have an effect on balances that get reported. Through those procedures we performed, we didn't identify any instances of internal control deficiencies or non-compliance. It was just a very clean audit. For federal awards, the district gets funding through various federal programs each year. And we're required to audit certain programs each year. This year, we audited various COVID-19 programs that are collectively referred to as the Education Stabilization Fund. We also audited the Special Education Cluster. Again, through our audit of those programs, no internal control deficiencies were identified and no instances of non-compliance were identified. The last area is the state compliance audit area. Similar to federal awards, the district must comply with various state requirements and we're required to audit those each year. I think there's maybe twenty or so that are applicable to Chino. Again, through our audit of those areas, no internal control deficiencies and no instances of non-compliance. So overall, just a very clean audit, no findings to report.
Awesome. Thank you. Board members, Dr. Enfield, any comments? Seeing that there are none, thank you, Sandra, for keeping us in check. Did you have something else?
Measure G, we also performed that audit, the performance audit of the Building Fund, Fund Twenty-One. We, there's two elements of that audit. There's a financial statement portion and a performance audit portion. The financial statement portion is essentially, is very similar to the district's financial report where we audit the reported balances. Similar to the district audit, there were no issues to report for the Building Fund in terms of reported financial information. As far as the performance audit report, we're required to audit a sample of expenditures charged to the district's building fund to verify that they're in compliance with allowable purposes under the bond measure. Through our audit of those sampled expenditures, again, no issues identified. All tested expenditures were allowable under the bond measure and were for allowable projects slash purposes.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, discussion from the board? Seeing that there's none, thank you for providing that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we're now on to communications and we have Mr. Cervantes. You're first.
Hello, everyone. Happy New Year. Happy January. Happy New Year. And, you know, as a new board member and as a member of this community for going on thirty-five years now, makes really proud to see the representation we have here. And I know a lot of you already had left, but to see you show up for your principal, for your coaches, and for your athletic director, it's awesome to see that. And to see that that's the Chino community, that's the community that I have known now for thirty-five years. And to see you out there with the passion, with the concerns, with the legitimate explanations you guys had, we take it to heart. And I personally thank you guys. And I appreciate you guys showing up and please continue to show up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cervantes. Mr. Na?
Yes, I'd like to thank our student rep Gabriella, bringing the issue of our L.A. Fire. I would like to ask Dr. Enfield if, anyway possible, we could post our fundraising effort on our website, district website, about Ayala and different schools to support those people that was suffering from the L.A. Fire.
Yeah, I can work with Andy on that.
Yeah, I think it's very important that we would come together supporting our people in California. It's just a devastation what had happened to hundreds of thousand people in California. And if there's a way that we could all participate in helping, as Gabriella and other people had mentioned tonight, we need to do so. And second, I'd like to thank students from Chino High School coming over tonight to support, especially Mr. Henkel, athletic director, who has been there for many years, yes, to represent you, to support you, to support your family. And you came here alone with your parents in a respect for Mr. Henkel. And I would agree with each one of you one hundred percent. And so thank you for sending up for your athletic director at Chino High School. And I'll have a personal conversation with him, hopefully in near future. So thank you for coming in support of your athletic director. He's a great man. Thank you. And lastly, I'd like to thank and congratulate Donnie Henkel. Tonight is his birthday, but he's also working very hard for our district, for our students. And he's standing outside. But happy birthday, Donnie Henkel, for all these years of service. So thank you, Donnie. And this will be my comment for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Na. I have Mr. Cruz. Hold on.
Thank you. Chino community for showing up and supporting Coach LaRosa and Mr. Henkel. Thank you. That's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. And I have Mr. Monroe.
Yeah, I think everybody's already said it. Thanks for the community coming out, supporting what you think is right and for the people that have made impacts in your lives. We have tough decisions to make up here and nothing about sitting on this dais is easy. And sometimes those decisions affect far more than what we would like, but we have to make decisions anyways. But I thank you for coming and speaking and want you to know that your comments are heard and greatly, actually, a lot of them are shared by the members of this board. I do want to thank the Ayala Chinese Club. That performance at the beginning was outstanding. For a minute there, I thought I forgot I was at a board meeting. So it was nice. What a great job they do over there and the students were fantastic. So I do want to ask, in light of the fires and we've suffered many power outages at a couple of our schools, and I would like to know kind of the status of where the district stands when the power goes out. I know we are having kids on campus. What does that look like for us if we can kind of get a report back on that? Do we have fire alarms? What's our reserve battery capability? Do we have lighting? Do we have generators that power? How much of the campus? Are we mandated to keep doors open so that lights get into the classroom? All of those are which somewhat of the concerns that we need to maybe look at going forward as we look at safety being paramount on our campuses and teaching teachers to have the doors locked during campus. When the power goes out, we're kind of opposite of that, I believe. I don't know. I'd like to, I'd like to see a report of what measures we have as a district that allows us to operate safely on campus when we don't have any power, if we can look at that or, and even how we can better prepare in the future should that happen. Because it looks like this is going to be normal going forward for Southern California, Edison, whenever there's a little gust that comes up that we're all going to be experiencing power outages. So is there something going forward that the district can look at that allows us to operate maybe at almost normal capacity and consolidate our classrooms or our students, but do so in a safe way that allows us to operate to our safety standards that we've worked so hard to implement? So if we can maybe look at that and get information back on it, I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Superintendent Dr. Enfield.
All right. I want to, again, wish everybody a Happy New Years. And then I do want to talk about the power outages, Mr. Monroe, too, on that because typically we get a notice from Southern California Edison and power may go off. And all of the power outages over the years that we've been here have been very short-lived. It's anywhere from ten minutes to two hours at the longest. And last week, we had an incident where the power was off Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday over at Chino Hills High School. And it was off Wednesday, back on Thursday, and off Friday over at Oak Ridge. And it went off yesterday at Oak Ridge for a short period and then came back on. And we received no notifications. I mean, we haven't, we, last week, we received some notifications on those, but this week we haven't received any notifications. We went, didn't receive notifications when power came back on. And I'm very concerned that this is the new normal for California because what it ended up doing was turning the power off over at a conference of high school for three days of, three days of attendance that was very low, understandably. But we, I made the decision as a superintendent to keep the schools open because the schools should be open. And if parents need a place for their kids to be, I wanted to make sure we had that. We have looked at the number of schools that could be impacted and we have that. Mr. Shatur has that. We talked about this on Tuesday in Cabinet, that we have the list of schools that have that potential. I think there's about ten or eleven schools that have that potential. The ones that seem to be most at risk seems to be the Cal-Aero, Legacy, Butterfield Ranch, Chino Hills High School, and Oak Ridge. But there are some that are more inland that surprised me that we're on that list. So we are looking at what can we do as a district to have stuff at the school sites to continue if this is going to become the new normal. So yeah, that getting a report to you will not be a problem. We will get that. And some of the things that we talked about in Cabinet of what can we do moving forward to ensure that when these things happen that we can respond much quicker on that. And it's going to probably require resources and money as part of that process. So if I can advocate, if people can contact local politicians and come up with something because people's power in this day and nation, that shouldn't be the response, the wind is blowing and we just turn off the electricity for three days in our community. So, but that was my two cents, but we are looking into that and we'll have a report for the board on that. I thought there was one other thing. Oh, yeah. Donnie, happy birthday. Right?
Before I get, before I get happy birthday, we'll sing at the end when we adjourn. But I also want to address the fires and I do appreciate Gabriella being resourceful and bringing a solution. Thank you. I enjoy your board comments. I enjoy you always having solutions and I enjoy hearing all the updates at all the school sites. So we, I just, I really want to thank you for doing that. I hear over and over, people look forward to your comments and look forward to having to hear what's happening at all the school sites. So thank you so much for doing that. Now, when it comes to the fires, obviously, our heart goes out. I mean, I do say I'm very grateful to see our community go into action, whether it's schools, PTAs, local churches, businesses offering their businesses, you know, for a place to put donations. You see trucks being given to be able to get those materials and resources out there. I see all kinds of different faiths coming together and just trying to get people the supplies that they need. My heart breaks because, you know, I'm friends and just like with all of you guys, with a lot of people in that area, and some of them, their houses were burnt down and the schools were reopening and they didn't have clothing for their kids because they go to Target and it's all sold out over there. You can imagine it's chaotic. While we go into our store, we have everything, they don't have anything over in that area and to get out and get into a vehicle, it's really hard. So I mean, I do appreciate that. I will say locally, it hit us as far as, not the fires, which I'm so grateful and I don't ever want to downplay that, but the electricity was huge. Families without, you know, electricity, we have, you know, them not, kids not having a home. If we were to shut down the schools without electricity, their parents are at work, they didn't have a way to make food. So I do want to acknowledge a lot of different people because it came with like no real good notice, to be honest with you. And with the notice saying it could be on within forty minutes or who knows, and definitely until they figure something out. And I'm glad to hear that Dr. Enfield is already putting things in place, but I can tell you, working directly with him, our city of Chino Hills, I have to give it to our mayor. our mayor, Art Bennett, we had a situation where the local high school went out, and the, I don't know if you've ever been on that intersection over by Chino Hills High, we have tons of kids crossing that crosswalk. Imagine, this is a high school of almost, I think it could be over three thousand kids, but let's just estimate around three thousand kids, and those kids crossed those two major intersections, and me going onto the campus to try to, like, provide any assistance I could during that time, I see our security with no, you know, electricity. They have it, parents all the way down the street trying to get their kid out of school for the parents that did want to get their kids. They did an amazing job at keeping everybody safe, making sure no visitors were checked into the office unless they went through this certain area, got the qualifications. The kids were all in line waiting for their parents. And just the way that you had no basic resources that you usually have, and to see them just go into action, I'm very grateful we have those kinds of people. I'm very grateful for the teachers that kept their classrooms open, and were obviously, you know, teaching our kids or just providing the support during a time where some parents, again, couldn't be there for their kids during that time. Our principals, Oak Ridge and Chino Hills, I have to give it to all of them, their staff, just for trying to make sure that they provided a solution for every student. When Dr. Enfield and I, after Ben Montgomery, our city manager for Chino Hills, and our, I'll go back to that story, sorry, I get sidetracked, I called them, and I said, all these kids are about to cross the crosswalk within a few hours. And I'm telling you right now, I sat at that light when I was coming in, and I almost got swept a couple times from cars, not realizing there's no lights flashing. When the lights go out like that, you don't even have anything. And I'm not going to downplay that you shouldn't follow basic, you know, road rules. You're supposed to stop when there is no green or red, but the reality is, most drivers don't even probably know that anymore, and they don't pay attention. Driver's Ed is not a requirement in high school. I wish it was, because I definitely benefited from that, and I was taught very well by Chino Valley in Driver's Ed, but I almost saw a few accidents. And I think it was reported to me, a deputy that morning got rear-ended, too, as well at that intersection. And my heart, as a mother and a board member, was safety, obviously. I mean, we have board members all across the board and our staff that are worried about safety, and I just, I envisioned a kid crossing that crosswalk and getting hit. And I called him immediately, our mayor, and he got me in contact with the city manager, and they came up with a solution. They put these, you know, stop signs on, so it visually tells people you need to stop. I'm not saying that was an all solution, but dang, it worked really great, because they over put them all over the place and plastered, so it couldn't be denied that you had to stop there. So I do have to say, just seeing our community come together for the things of just electricity going out, I do appreciate all of our, everybody, our schools, our local government, working together to try to do that. It looks like it's going to be the norm with Edison, and Santa Ana winds are a reality over here. They do get pretty windy, and it's kind of makes me nervous, but I'm glad that our staff is already looking into alternatives. I know that, you know, food was still supplied for the kids. They still had a place where, you know, they had at least the support there, and they had a meal. So I do appreciate Dr. Enfield's decision, although sometimes we come together, and I don't, me eye to eye, then I see his reasoning again, and I understand what he does, what he does and why he does it. That's his job, is to protect all the students, right? So I appreciate that, and thank you. Thank you to your staff for just working together to ensure that all students had a place, and parents had the option the next day to send their kids or not. And I had a lot of parents that didn't send their kids, but they appreciated the option to have an excused absence in that, in this situation, when we had no control over this situation. I think that's all for that part, as far as our Ayala students, and Yarboy, and Mrs. Gao, Gao, I don't want to say her name right. Did I say it right? Guo, sorry. I want to make sure I say it right. I appreciate their presentation. That was absolutely stunning and beautiful. So much grace provided by all the performers. I just, you could see the heart and soul behind that, and it just is, it just shows how unique and diverse our community is, and I was very appreciative that we got to see that tonight. And again, to our Chino families, and our students, and our coaches, and our principal, and our staff, we hear you, we see you. There's, I know, I tried to get to most, I've read all your emails, but I try to respond. We're very limited on what we can say. Trust me, as a parent, it would drive me nuts when I couldn't get a full, complete answer, but because of, you know, confidentiality of students, of staff, of just the situation, possible litigations, I mean, there's so many things that make us not be able to say anything that we want to, but just know that there's a lot of information that the public isn't, they don't have it available to them. These decisions are not easy tonight. I do want to clear up something. Hinkel was not on a board agenda to do anything to him on that. If something were to happen, you would see it on a board agenda as far as termination of any employees. There's, you know, stuff that always goes through the agenda, just to try to provide some clarification. But my heart hurts for all of you guys, even the students that had to go through the traumatic event of witnessing what happened. Again, we don't get to hear or see a lot of these things, because of student confidentiality, unless a parent reaches out and tells us the situation, or a staff member, or, you know, somebody else from the community reaches out. So your emails do provide a lot of insight. I am very appreciative. I'm a mother of two athletes. I understand how coaches and athletic directors and principals play a huge role. Just know that nothing is taken for granted. I heard over and over that you're just looking for somebody to take the blame. I can guarantee that many of us don't sleep at night just with the whole situation. We haven't, and coming personally, it's nothing that anybody wants to see or hear about. It's definitely a tragic situation for everybody, and my heart goes out to you, and I'm continuing to pray for everybody involved, and including those that make decisions to make the best decision for our community. With that said, I just hope we all come together in times where it's not easy, instead of, you know, beating each other up or looking at each other that, you know, somebody's doing something wrong, have conversations. Even if I can't tell you much, I would love to hear what you guys have to say. My heart broke hearing our students here tonight. I thank every single one of them for being here. It also broke when I read their emails. It's, it hits differently. It's not that as parents, your emails don't matter. They do, because you're speaking on behalf of your child, but when you hear a child reach out, I get it. It's really hard, because we're their advocates, and we need to advocate for what's best for them. So we're listening to you, we hear you, we love you, we see you. We are Chino Valley, we are different, I agree, seeing you guys out there tonight. I mean, I came out there really quick before I had to go in and start the meeting, but my heart hurt. I didn't see you guys as people who were pissed off, I seen you guys as people who cared and loved your kids and loved our staff, and I thank you for being here and voicing your concerns. With that said, I will now adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting at eight twenty P.M.[1790.63][1790.63]